Good evening, everyone. The time is approximately 4:30 PM on Tuesday, February 14th, 2023. This is a public meeting. And I'd like to open the public meeting and I'll turn it over to Township Administrator, Mr. Christopher Gilbert. Oh, do we need a roll call? We have a roll call, sorry.
Mr. Honalaw?
Present.
Ms. Davis?
Present.
Trustees are present.
Thank you, Mr. Burning. I'll now turn it over to Mr. Gilbert.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. As mentioned, this is a public hearing for the Hollydale Road Rehabilitation Project. This is the equalization hearing that is required under Statute 5573.10. The streets that are associated with this development or this rehabilitation project are Toulon Drive, Marymade Lane, and Cloverton Court. The notice in compliance with the Sunshine Law for this particular hearing was done on February 1st and February 8th of 23 in the Cincinnati Inquirer. The Hollydale Road Rehabilitation Project replaced all the curb catch basins, removed existing asphalt and pavement, resurfacing with two and a half inch of new blacktop. This is the 22nd project that we've done in this way where we have an assessment associated with the rehabilitation project. And it is in concert with our infrastructure improvement plan that was adopted back in May of 2016. There are two types of assessments, as the board is aware. There is a voluntary and a mandatory. This is considered a mandatory assessment since it had grant dollars associated with the project. We do those as mandatory assessments in order to take advantage of the grant. There are a total of 74 parcels on the three streets that were previously mentioned, representing the property owners to be assessed for the project, or again, the 74 different property owners or parcels anyway. And the assessment to each property owner for the project is scheduled to be $56.44 per year for 10 years, apportioned and paid equally by the property owners abutting the road improvement as established by Higher Advice Code, Section 5573.07, Section A1. On April 13th of 21, the Board of Trustees passed Resolution 42-2021, determining the necessity for road improvement as requested by petitioners. This is the project's go-ahead, essentially saying that we want to move forward with the project. Is that correct? Was it in April of 21? Was that long ago? Okay. Yes, right, because then we construct the project the following year and then, okay. Does that make sense? We always, the year prior before we actually do the road project. And then, the plans and specifications and scheduled assessments were prepared and they were then reviewed and approved by the county engineer as required by statute. The notice, again, was given on February 1st and February 7th, accepting written or in-person objections. The purpose of this hearing is to consider any objections to the scheduled assessments. The board has the authority to change the assessment schedule if necessary. The equalization hearing, as the board is aware, is not to determine whether or not there should be or to do the project, but whether or not the assessment is considered equal or rational for the project. The bid opening for the project was on February 19th of 2021. It was awarded by the board at the regular meeting on April 13th of 21 to Adlita Construction. And the next step in this process is a resolution to adopt the estimates and specifications as reported by the county engineer for said improvements, and that is on the agenda for the subsequent meeting to these hearings. Seeing that there's no one in the audience, I guess, unless there are any questions or concerns by the board, that concludes my report for this hearing.
I have no questions.
I have only one question. There weren't any written objections? Or did they have to appear in person to object?
They don't have to appear in person, and I don't believe we received any written objections.
Very good, thank you. Those were my questions.
Okay. With that, then, I guess, a motion to adjourn this public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Do you mean adjourned?
Good evening, everyone. The time is approximately 5 o'clock PM on Tuesday, February 14th. We are here this evening for an equalization hearing for Burlington Meadows. Mr. Burning, may we have a roll call, please?
Yes, Mr. Honalaw?
Present.
Ms. Davis?
Present.
Trustees are here.
Thank you. And I will turn this hearing over to Mr. Christopher Gilbert, our Township Administrator.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. This is an equalization hearing for the Road Rehabilitation Project consisting of Maria Avenue and Briar Rose Court. This public hearing is required by Higher Advice Code, Section 5573.10. The notice was given in compliance with Sunshine Law and the requirements of ORC 5573.10 on February 1st and February 8th of 23 in the Cincinnati Inquirer. The Burlington Meadows Road Rehabilitation Project replaced all the curb catch basins, removed the existing asphalt and pavement, and resurfaced with approximately two and a half inches of new blacktop. This is the 23rd project that we've done in this way, in accordance with the infrastructure improvement plan that was adopted as part of the Neighborhood Master Plan in May of 2016. As the board is aware, there are two types of assessment, voluntary and mandatory. This particular assessment is mandatory, given the fact that grant dollars were associated with this project. There are a total of 67 parcels on two streets, as previously mentioned, and that represents the property owners to be assessed for this project. For this particular project, each parcel will be assessed, or each property owner, rather, will be assessed $56.44 per year for 10 years, apportioned and paid equally by the property owners abutting the road improvement as established by ORC Section 5573.07, Section A1. On April 13th of 21, the Board of Trustees passed Resolution 42-2021, determining the necessity for the road improvement. The plans and specifications and scheduled assessments were prepared, and then they were then reviewed and approved by the county engineer as required by the Higher Advice Code. Notice was given on February 1st and February 7th of 23, accepting written or in-person objections. The purpose of this particular hearing is to hear any objections to the schedule of assessments as previously described. The board can then change the assessment schedule if necessary. This particular equalization hearing, or any equalization hearing for that matter, is not to determine whether or not the project should move forward, but rather to determine the appropriateness of the schedule of assessments. The bid opening for this project was on February 19th of 2021. It was awarded by the Board of Trustees at its regular meeting on Tuesday, April 13th, to Adlita Construction. The next step in this process is to pass a resolution adopting the estimates and specifications as reported by the county engineer for the improvements described this evening. That resolution is on the agenda for our subsequent regular meeting. And unless there are any questions or concerns by the board, that concludes my report for this hearing as there are no property owners here in attendance.
I do not have any questions.
And just one quick question. There were no written objections received either?
Correct.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is closed.
Meeting is adjourned. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Springfield Township Board of Trustees Regular Meeting. Today is Tuesday, February 14th, 2023, and the time is approximately 5:30 PM. Mr. Burning, may we have a roll call, please?
Yes, Mr. Honalaw?
Present.
Ms. Davis?
Present.
Mr. Burning is under the weather and will not be here.
Thank you, Mr. Burning. And now I would ask each of you to stand with me and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
(Inaudible) 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 (Inaudible)
Thank you. Now we come to a very special portion of our agenda this evening. We are, there is an honorary street naming presentation and memory and recognition of Bishop Paul A. Bowers of Greater Emmanuel Apostolic Temple. Pastor Daniels, would you please come to the front?
First of all, I'd like to say it is an honor to be here presenting this to Bishop Bowers. I know that you all have really worked hard to get this done on behalf of your late father, and I'm just honored to be here presenting this to you all today. And I speak on behalf of my colleagues as well. So I have a little biography to read in reference Bishop Bowers. So Bishop Paul A. Bowers was born on December 11th, 1929, in Oxford, Pennsylvania. He went on to receive a Bachelor of Theology from Enon Bible College in 1951, and a Bachelor of Science from the University of Cincinnati in 1964. Bishop Bowers taught in the Cincinnati Public School System for over five years. He retired from teaching in 1968 to dedicate his time to the ministry. Bishop Bowers served as Chairman of the Ohio District Council of the Pentecostal Assemblies of the World from 1976 to 1992. During his tenure in office, he built a 100-bed nursing home at the ODC Campground in Zanesville, Ohio. Also at the campground, he built a 1,200-seated air-conditioned worship center, a fully-equipped cafeteria which seats 500 people, and also built a dormitory which can house 100 people. This campground serves as a meeting and retreat facility. Bishop Bowers served as the diocesan bishop of the Carolina Council of the Pentecostal Assemblies of the World from 1976 to 1996. Under his 20-year leadership, the number of churches in this council increased from 30 to 62 churches. Bishop Bowers served as the Assistant General Secretary, General Secretary, and Assistant Presiding Bishop of the Pentecostal Assemblies of the World Incorporated. In 1992, he was elevated to the office of the Presiding Bishop and served in this capacity for six years. During his tenure as Presiding Bishop of the PAW Incorporated, he has remodeled the International Headquarters Facility in Indianapolis, Indiana, along with the Enon Bible College, a project that cost over $2,220,000. Bishop Bowers was married to Dr. Elma J. Bowers for 45 years. Together, they worked tirelessly in building their local ministry, as well as traveling throughout the country and abroad, supporting and building other ministries. 21 of those years, they labored together, growing the ministry and supporting the community of Fintetown. Bishop Bowers passed away on January 31st, 2019, leaving his wife, Lady Rebecca Bowers, and three daughters, Paula, Patricia, and Pamela, as well as many grandchildren, great-grandchildren, nieces, nephews, and many, many friends. We are proud to honor Bishop Paul A. Bowers tonight for his many contributions to the Springfield Township community. Congratulations. And so, so this is a commemorative sign. It's yours to put in your office, Pastor, or, and we're going to be there tomorrow to install the real sign. So you can do whatever you like with that one. That's yours to keep. Yes. And then I want to present to each of the daughters of the roses on behalf of the township.
Three for you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Yeah, three for you.
Yeah, that's right. And then there's, yes, there you go.
That's right.
There you go. Thank you, thank you, thank you. You are so very welcome, and we'll see you tomorrow morning at the street unveiling. All right. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your, you are so welcome. Thank you so, so, so welcome.
Is, is, okay, there we go. To everyone from Greater Emmanuel, thank you, and we want to also tonight thank Reverend Angelo C. Bryce, a man who took on the cause to help us through. If he had not been faithful and diligent, then we would not be here. Certainly, you've heard all that my father-in-law did. You knew how much he loved his community in doing things like that. It's been a long time coming, but to the township and all of those who had something to do with it, it started a long time ago. I will say this, and once you heard that, now you see why we refused for the merry-go-round on the sliding board. Hallelujah. We waited and waited, and our change did come. God bless you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion? All in favor?
Aye.
We have 10-minute recess.
We are back on our regular meeting, picking up our agenda. Do we need a motion to come out, or no? We do? Okay.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so we have two sets of minutes to approve. One from our regular session, January 10th, 2023, and our regular work session, January 24th, 2023. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Means approved.
Mr. Burning, may we please have your financial report?
Yes, Ms. Davis. For the month ending January 31st, 2023, the township expenditures were $2,173,540.69, and receipts were $392,174.35. The ending cash balance of $24,752,121.07 includes obligations for expenditures, payroll, regular operating costs, ongoing capital improvements, projects, and investments. What I do request from the board is a motion to approve receipts, warrants, payroll expenditures, and updated and current revenue and reports for the period ending January 31st, 2023. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. I just want everyone to know, financial reports are available for viewing at the Township Administration Building during regular business hours or online 24/7. Thank you, Ms. Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Burning. Next, we have our departmental action and discussion items. I'll turn this portion of our agenda over to Mr. Christopher Gilbert.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. I only have one action item this evening, and it is a liquor permit hearing request for Sunderman Entertainment Group, otherwise known as Sunday's Bar at 8603 Wenton Road. And as I understand it, there are no objections to this. So with that being said, I would just then ask for a motion to send the requisite paperwork to the Ohio Division of Liquor Control. Did you want to say something, Chief, or?
No, I think it's just a matter of reverberating from one side of the street to the other.
Correct. Just an address change. Yeah.
So moved.
Second.
Aye.
Motion carries?
Thank you. Looking at the personnel update, under discussion items, several resignations in the Fire Department. We had Madeline Sequena, Tyler Schnell, William Bitner, and Caitlin Lawler. All part-time, either MTS or paramedics, have resigned to move on to possibly other positions in other departments for full-time jobs. We did have the new hires of Ben Kemper, Matt Leaper, Mark Feldman, Kenneth Mitchell, and Cameron Burns as well. And in the Public Works Department, we had the retirement of Troy Smith, laborer, and he was with the township for how long?
32 years.
32 years. So that concludes the personnel update, and now I'll turn it over to Kim for Community Events Program.
Thank you. This Saturday, we've got our Daddy Daughter Dance. It's our first event for the year. That is sold out. On March 11th is our Mom From. That is sold out. And our next event will be April 21st, where we have Portrait of a Rifa, which is a dinner theater program. Arts Connect right now is offering all of their classes and programs out of Brent Elementary School due to the flooding that happened on Christmas. And everything is going relatively well, actually, for being in a new place and having to switch so soon. So people are finding us, and I think a lot of people know that that's where the programming's going on.
Good. Thanks, Kim. Appreciate it. And I've visited over at Brent several times now, and I can say that it's pretty remarkable, the continuity that she and her team has been able to implement over there, to have probably 80% of the programs and events to continue despite being able to move. And, you know, I want to publicly, you know, express our gratitude to the Fintetown Local School District for offering that building and allowing us to utilize it. And just the work that they put in in order to make that happen has been, in such a short timeframe, has been pretty remarkable. So I think you were down for, what, maybe two weeks?
Yeah.
Which is pretty amazing, so kudos to you and your team. A couple other things. Obviously, the board has copied its departmental activity reports. In addition to those, this is, we're getting to the time of year where we're finalizing our permanent appropriations for '23. The anticipated timeline is to have that approved at our March regular meeting. At that point in time, we will have a presentation or a public hearing regarding our permanent appropriations, and we'll have that presentation. In addition to that, I would ask, because it's a major project, Mike, if you could give us sort of an update in a timeline and sort of public expectations for the Galbraith Road Improvement Project, which I know is going to have some disruption of the traffic, to say the least. So if you could provide sort of an update on where we're at with that.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Gilbert. I'm happy to share that construction started yesterday. The crew is currently working on installing the new water main that will provide service to the new TriHealth Medical Office Facility. Anticipation is, is that there will be two lanes of traffic traveling east and westbound on Galbraith, open at all times. I would say 60 to 75% of the time, it'll only be reduced to one lane closure. So that'll allow for three lanes. It'll just, it'll vary from the north to the south side, depending on where we're at in the construction schedule. We are slated to have project completed by July 1st. The only caveat may be the traffic signals and mast arms. They could be a little bit delayed. But we've got a contingency plan in place to allow for the timeline to be met and for the new facility to open at that time, as TriHealth is planning. If any questions, I encourage residents or anyone watching, just to give me a call. They'd be happy to address their concerns via email or by phone.
And, you know, clearly, we'll be monitoring traffic, and if we need to make adjustments to any sort of traffic patterns or how the construction traffic is handled, we'll do that. But clearly, that's a major road for people to access across counties, so we're going to be very watchful to make sure that we eliminate or alleviate as much traffic congestion as possible.
Just bear with us. Give us a few months, and a road that is in very poor condition will be in new condition hopefully by mid to late summer. So the end result should be very, very good, and it'll be a lot safer. I mean, kudos to the board for recognizing a dangerous intersection there at Galbraith and Central Park, given that bend, and now we are widening that and allowing for a dedicated turn lane for whether people are turning into Central Park or the new TriHealth facility. And the entire project is being funded through grants, various grant programs. So a win-win all the way around.
Yes, and in addition to projects and construction, I think everyone is aware of the issues that we've had in parts of our administration, and obviously, the art center, which is what we talked about that is being, was moved to Brent. The plans are being finalized to repair both of those buildings. We will be going out to bid here hopefully within the next two weeks, and the anticipation is, is that those buildings will be sort of put back together, if you will, by sometime around, similar timeframe around July. So that's, that's our hope. In addition to that, speaking of projects, a long-awaited project, the former Brentwood Bowl that is currently being revitalized into a local craft brewery and restaurant, they started work on that building today in a very small way by putting in an overhead, basically garage door in the rear of that property, so they can start to store material inside the building. So it's good to see something happening with that building after a little over two years. And it's been a long project. It's been a long time coming to get this project to this point, and we're excited to see actually work happening on the building. Their anticipated opening date is sometime in the fall of this year, so. With that being said, as I mentioned, the board has copied its departmental activity reports, and unless there are any questions of those, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Gilbert. All great things happening. Okay, next, we have several resolutions on our agenda for this evening. First is Resolution Number 13-2023, authorizing private sale of unneeded and unfit-for-use property in the Police Department. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Honalaw?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Resolution carries?
Next is Resolution Number 14-2023, authorizing sale by internet auction of unneeded, obsolete, or unfit-for-use property in the Police Department. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Honalaw?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Resolution carries?
Next is Resolution Number 15-2023, declaring motor vehicles located on public or private property in Springfield Township, Hamilton County, Ohio, to be junk motor vehicles pursuant to Ohio Revised Code 505.173, and ordering the removal of such vehicles pursuant to Resolution Number 80-2012 and RC 505.871. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Honalaw?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Resolution carries?
Next is Resolution Number 16-2023, adopting the estimates and specifications reported by the county engineer for improvement to Toulon Drive, Cloverton Court, and Marymade Lane, approving and confirming the assessments for such improvement and ordering that the needed improvement proceed. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Honalaw?
I would just like to say one thing. We had two hearings earlier this evening for these two projects. This is the 22nd and 23rd assessment project where we've gone into specific areas in the township and been able to revitalize our neighborhood streets. It's been a very popular program, and I just want to thank, thank all the staff, and Mike, particularly you, for spearheading this. And it's, it's the way we're going to get ahead and get the streets taken care of in Springfield Township, so.
Last six years, we've done probably 140 streets of the 400 that we have, to the tune of probably around 21 million. And in large part, we've been able to do that mainly because of Mike's grantsmanship, if you will. And equally as important is the assessment program. So it's been a very successful program, as you mentioned.
And to that, I will say aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Resolution carries?
Next is Resolution Number 17-2023, adopting the estimates and specifications reported by the county engineer for improvement to Maria Avenue and Briar Rose Court, approving and confirming, excuse me, the assessments for such improvement and ordering that the improvement proceed. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Honalaw?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Resolution carries?
Next is Resolution Number 18-2023, supplemental temporary appropriation in the General Fund.
in the general fund. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Honolaw?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Resolution carries?
Next is Resolution Number One-nine-dash-two-zero-two-three, declaring nuisances pursuant to Ohio Revised Code Section five-zero-five-point-eight-seven at various listed properties within Springfield Township, and authorizing statutory actions necessary to abate the nuisances. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Honolaw?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Resolution carries?
And finally, is Resolution Number Two-zero-dash-two-zero-two-three, establishing assessment for abatement of nuisance and certifying same to the Hamilton County Auditor. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Honolaw?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Resolution carries?
Now, we come to the portion of our agenda where it's old business. Do we have any old business before the board?
I do not have any old business or good business this evening.
Thank you. So next is our citizens' participation. So if there's anyone here this evening that would like to address the board, please step to the microphone and the podium and state your name and address for the record. Good evening.
Hello, my name is Robin Robinson, and I live at eight-three-five Fintit Trail. My concern is the, um, the program where the township makes agreements with energy companies. And I think I'm just bringing to you all's attention that we don't always get the mailings saying that you all have agreed with this company to supply gas and electric for the township. And my December bill, not the January bill, because everybody experienced a high increase in their January bill, but my December bill was affected because of this change, and I had to call this company that was in my bill. First of all, I didn't get the mailing, okay? And so I was reviewing my bill, I called the number that was in the bill, they did not, it was a subsidiary of the number that was in the bill. So the runaround I got, you know, I think it was an inconvenience to me. And every time, I don't want to use the word "you all," but I'm not sure the Spring, the township changes, I just don't like, I understand why, why it's done nationwide, I understand why it's done, but I don't think it should be that we have to call to opt out. It should be we can call if we want to opt in, and because if I don't catch it, that means I'm paying for something that, it, it might be at a higher price, which it was in December, and I, I just don't feel that the agreement should be on my household income based on, um, you all's agreement with these companies that come to your.
So, Chris, you wanted to say something? Yeah. I can address it really quick. I, I apologize for the inconvenience and the runaround that you apparently received. We work with a, with a energy consultant, and, you know, I, I'd like to get some more information after the meeting of who you spoke to and who you called to try and resolve that, because there's really one number you should call, and that's with our consultant at Energy Alliances. Unfortunately, sometimes there's some predatory companies out there that you, that may be confused with our program. I can assure you that any resident that was in the Springfield Township program, over the term of our program, saved money rather than being with Duke Energy. Our rate, over the course of our term, was less than Duke's, so you didn't pay more. Now, is there a situation in an individual month where our rate may be higher than Duke's? Possibly. But if you look at it in terms of the entire term of our contract with a particular supplier, our residents always save money, because we lock in a fixed price. So I, I'd be anxious to know, look a little more into it to see what you may be experiencing, because it would be highly unlikely, and frankly, impossible, that it actually costs you more, because our rate is less than Duke's. For example, our current gas rate that we have is a little, I think is point-eight-four-something, Duke's is over nine currently. So our, our gas rate is less, and the board and our consultant, we don't lock in prices until we think it's right. For example, in the, in the previous year, we waited to lock in a, a electric price after our contract was terminated, not terminated, but after it expired, because we didn't feel like the market was right for us to lock in a price yet. We're currently looking at locking in a price that's hopefully gonna be under seven cents per kilowatt-hour, when Duke's is probably gonna be close to ten, if not twelve. So we, the only reason we do this is to save residents' money. Getting to your issue in terms of why it's an opt-out as opposed to an opt-in, it's pretty, pretty self-explanatory. That's because that's how the residents voted it in. This was the ballot initiative back in two thousand and four, and the reason it was on the ballot that way is because in order to get the best price, these aggregation suppliers give the best price to programs that are opt-out as opposed to opt-in, for obvious reasons, right? They know that they're more likely, more inclined to get more customers if it's an opt-out rather than an opt-in. People generally won't take the action to opt-in unless people will take an action to opt-out. So they know they're gonna get more customers, which in turn allows us to get a better price. If it was an opt-in, we probably wouldn't do the program, because you wouldn't get a good enough price to make it worth it. That's why, and we don't really have a choice, because that's the way it was voted in. It has to be an opt-out. But I can assure you that this board only takes actions regarding picking suppliers if we feel like, over the course of a term, you're gonna get the best rate. It's kind of like gas for your car. We, we want to make sure that when we lock in a price, that while the gas prices go up and down, sometimes daily anymore, right, for who knows what reason, but we want to make sure that that rate that we lock in, over the course of a twelve- or twenty-four-month term, saves residents' money. And we know that there'll be some months in that twenty-four-month timeframe where our rate may be higher than Duke's, but generally, that's because you're not using that particular source of, of energy. For example, Duke raises their electric rate in the summer and lowers it in the winter. They do the inverse with gas. They raise it in the winter and lower it in the summer. Why? Because you're using less of each one of those in those particular months, where our rate is fixed. So that, that's how we look at it, but in terms of getting your customer service, if, if you call, if you look on our webpage, and it talks about aggregation, our supplier or, or, or consultant, Energy Alliances, numbers on there, if you call that, you should, you, you should be able to speak to someone, and they can opt you out immediately if you want to be out. But I would caution you to really explore the prices before you opt out, because our, our rate is generally almost always saving residents' money.
And, and if I could say one thing, Chris, we did this approximately nineteen years ago, is a way, is like a value-added thing to bring an extra benefit to Springfield Township residents. And the program really has been, as Chris said, very successful. We've saved our residents millions of dollars in utility bills over that period. Springfield Township was like one of the first one or two political jurisdictions in southwest Ohio to successfully implement an energy aggregate, aggregation plan, and it's really, in the long run, it's paid off for our residents. When you have the people that call you up, and they're like, you know, like a one-time, "Hey, we're soliciting you to try and get you to switch," they're never gonna have the kind of rate that we can have as an opt-out plan, you know, where they're paying somebody to solicit you to try and, you know, get that. So I know it can be at times frustrating, and we did have a period here where we actually went back to Duke, because our, our consultants said, "This isn't the time. Don't do it now. We need to wait. Things are coming down." And so we do look at it very carefully, and it's one of the things that we, we spend a lot, a lot of time and energy, and quite, you know, quite frankly, law doesn't require that we do it, but it's something that, just like with our garbage aggregation, we try to save, we've saved overall the township, residents a lot of money with that, and, and gotten better service and recycling and things like that for the township. But it's, I know it can be confusing at times, but we certainly, I appreciate your, you know, coming here and, and letting us know about some of this, and we'll talk to you after the meeting.
Okay.
Thank you, ma'am.
My apologies for my phone. I thought I had to.
I was wondering what that was. Thank you, thank you. Anyone else? All right, seeing as there is none, are none, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.